Thank you Pastor, thank you guys for joining us in the pledge. Uh, need a motion for the approval of the April second twenty twenty four work session minutes.
Move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
In unanimous.
Need a motion for approval to April second twenty twenty four regular council meeting minutes.
Move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
In unanimous.
Alright, the mayor's message, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you Mr. President, good evening.
Good evening.
The council, a good evening to all the citizens of Montgomery, thank you for coming out uh and sharing in local government, it's good to see, we like to see this crowd every uh meeting, so I'm glad to see so many people here uh tonight. Mr. President, as you know, uh primarily use this time to provide an update on projects that the city is leading. Uh announcements that the community needs to know such as lifting of a moratorium this week on bagging leaves and other debris. Uh and previewing upcoming events like this weekend's uh Jazz on the River and Small Business Week later this month. But tonight, uh with your permission, the main thing I would like to discuss in our community uh is response to this past weekend's violence that we've seen. But before we do, I have a couple of other items I would like to bring to the council's attention and I'll be very brief in the explanation of the executive summary. I'll provide a snapshot on what the city's financial position is projected to look like at fiscal year end based on March thirty first data. Please be reminded that the comparison of budget to actual revenue and expenditures is only a projection based on the data that is currently available. As we get closer and closer to the end of the fiscal year, the numbers will be pretty close to what has been projected for the closing of the year at September thirtieth twenty twenty four. After the next few months, we will have posted at least one-third of seasonal revenue. Business license and average loan revenues compared to budget were more than ninety-seven percent collected as of March thirty first. Slide please. The budget to actual projection of revenue on the screen reflects nearly one point four million dollars over budget at fiscal year end, which is primarily due to how sales and use taxes have trended during the first half of the current fiscal year. Year-over-year sales and use taxes are trending slightly more than five percent over the previous year. Total revenue is trending about three percent more than the same time in fiscal year twenty twenty-three. And expenditures are projected to be less than budget for departmental and non-departmental expenditures. Actual expenditures in the current year are expected to come in under budget due to attrition or expenditures not incurred due to the lack of being able to fill all employee vacancies. Yes, we still have shortages and openings too, um not just in our public safety department but throughout the city of Montgomery. So we encourage each and every person who is interested and believes they can serve the city uh to apply for one of these opportunities. It is projected that the city will be able to add a minimum of four to four and a half million dollars to fund balance or reserves. Or for those um not familiar with our terminology here, savings, that's significant. It is important that the council know that the city has reached its goal of getting reserves up to twenty percent. Sixty-three point three million dollars of the general fund operating budget as of completion of the financials for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Again, a significant achievement given where the city has been in past years. This puts the city in great position when it comes to how bond raters such as Moody's, Standard and Poor's, and Fitch look at the financial condition of our city. The city's current credit rating is in the middle of the high-grade category at double A by Standard and Poor's and Fitch or A by Moody's. I'm hopeful that the city will see its credit rating move up to the next level in the near future. When this administration began this journey, the reserves of the general fund was approximately twenty-five million dollars. The reserve balance as previously stated is at sixty-three point three million dollars as of September thirtieth twenty twenty-three, which means that the city's general fund reserve has grown more than one hundred and fifty percent. Again, that is significant financial footing for the city to be on right now. This hasn't been an easy task to accomplish. However, the ability to pay all short-term debt and coming up with a better way to purchase rolling stock, for example sanitation packers, pumper trucks, dump trucks, street sweepers, et cetera, has gotten the city to the financial position it is in today. We have made every effort to ensure that the goal of getting the city's reserves to twenty percent of the general fund budget was reached, and I am happy that we have finally arrived. Overall, the city is in a much better position financially than it has been in nearly two decades. Now, I want to talk about a few things relates to legislation. And this is legislation that impacts these financials that we're talking about, and that's the simple sales and use tax or SSUT. It's currently being debated in our state house today, and I went down to visit our local delegation to advocate on behalf of the city of Montgomery for their support for this tax. The city receives its online sales tax, the sales and use tax sold by out-of-state sellers from collections by the Alabama Department of Revenue Department. The distribution of the eight percent collected for online sales and use taxes are as follows. State of Alabama receives four percent, which is equivalent to the same state sales tax collected from a brick-and-mortar store in anywhere in the state of Alabama. The city shares the remaining four percent with the county in a sixty forty percent ratio, meaning that the city only receives two and a half percent of the four percent allocated to the city. Say that again, the city shares the remaining four percent with the county in a sixty forty ratio, meaning that the city only receives two and a half percent of the four percent allocated to the city. Current collections from brick-and-mortar stores in Alabama is three point five percent for the city. Consequently, you can see that the city of Montgomery is receiving a smaller percentage from online sales from out-of-state retailers that are distributed via the Alabama Department of Revenue. House Bill two fifty-eight has been introduced during the current legislative session to increase the sales tax on online purchases to around one point three percent. And is expected to be and has been introduced on the House floor today. The online sales tax has been a boost to state budgets. However, it's been a mixed blessing for local governments and schools. And in particular, when you look at Montgomery having the smallest general fund budget and the smallest revenue sources of any other major cities in our state. However, the following has to be taken into consideration. Brick-and-mortar stores are put at a competitive price disadvantage because in-person sales are subject to a higher tax than online sales. Communities with less commercial activity and less wealth benefit from the distribution formula of SSUT since the proceeds are distributed based on population and not where the purchase occurred. Big cities and counties receive less from online sales made by their residents than if those same purchases were made in person due to their higher sales volume and local sales taxes being higher than four percent. What does this mean? There's no one policy or solution that satisfies all parties. However, options include raising SSUT's rate to match the prevailing local sales tax rate, join twenty-four states currently participating in the streamlined sales tax, which would allow a unified system for applying and remitting sales and taxes for online and in-person sales, or finally, build our own system for online retailers to look up and submit sales taxes based on where the purchase is made. Immediate action on the SSUT is not expected because of how full state and local coffers are at the moment. This issue will become more central with the continued shift to increase in online sales. Now having said that, let me tell you what this means for the city of Montgomery. If the bill were to pass, it would mean an additional eight point nine million dollars to the general fund budget for the city of Montgomery. It would mean almost a million dollars for the county and just about nine hundred thousand dollars for our local school board. These are all dollars that we could use for a number of things, whether it is our raises that we're discussing right now around public safety and our first responders, in particular our police department, or whether it's other asks that get made of our council members. It's not come to the mayor, it comes to the general fund for the council to decide how it's distributed. That's significant for a city that does not have the opportunity right now to form any type of other revenue sources through any other taxation means. So when people come to the city council and there are a lot of things that we all want to do, there's a question of why can't we? Well, when our budget's at three hundred million dollars and the other budgets in Mobile, Huntsville, and Birmingham are at four hundred million dollars or more, significantly more even though they're cities of roughly the same population, that's what presents the crunch. So when we have an opportunity to bring in an additional, and this is for now, because we're seeing these taxes continue to grow, an additional nine million dollars to the general fund, that is significant. When our school system gets almost an additional nine hundred thousand dollars, that is significant. When our county commission would receive an additional nine hundred plus million, nine hundred plus thousand, almost one million dollars, that is significant. So while the legislature debates the SSUT tax, we want all of our councils, all our residents to know, those that are in person, those that are watching online, that Montgomery is losing out and many cities are losing out even as cities are forced to bear the burden of many unfunded state mandates that the legislature has passed down. So this is a little bit in the weeds, but I do think it's an important issue that is before our legislature right now. It's also important to know that the Alabama Department of Revenue, uh the Alabama County Commission Association, mayors, as well as the Alabama Retailers Association, and several other associations are in favor of this legislation. So we ask for all the support of the council, all the support of the citizens to push for the passage of this bill, uh House Bill two fifty-eight, because of what it would do, not only for the city of Montgomery, but for the county as well as our school system. So um wanted to just highlight that and I look forward to the continued debate at the legislature. I'll be there as much as needed uh to advocate on behalf of the city of Montgomery uh and to advocate on behalf of our entire community because of the constraints that we have budgetary-wise, but certainly because of the needs that we want to feel in this community to see it continue to thrive. Now that will conclude my uh financial updates, so now I want to get to uh recognition and then I'll get to a topic that's sensitive to everyone. Very quickly, we want to recognize um Christina Thornton, our longtime Emergency Management Authority Director who is retiring. Christina has led EMA since twenty sixteen. Her job has required a lot of late nights and a lot of early mornings, twenty-five-plus hour days, eight days a week. It also requires being on call on weekends, during ballgames, family dinners, and holidays. The EMA Director is part meteorologist, part engineer, part logistics expert, part medical specialist, part root doctor. Uh so she has to wear a lot of hats. So when families across the city are sheltering in place during the storm, Christina and her team are coordinating our community's response. When our rivers, creeks, and ponds are cresting, Christina and her team are coordinating our community's response. When tornadoes and straight-line winds have a path of destruction in their wake, Christina and her team coordinate our community's response. When the federal government asks cities to manage a community-wide vaccination effort to tamp down COVID, Christina and her team ensured everyone who wanted a vaccine could get one. When the temperatures outside are too low or too high, Christina and her team run warming and cooling centers across this city. The point is that Christina and her team have effectively and efficiently kept our community informed about potential severe weather, responded quickly to families in need, and made sure that our city was prepared for whatever Mother Nature throws at Montgomery and the River Region. So with that, we want to thank Christina for her years to the city and the county, and on behalf of the city, and I'm not sure if county, Commissioner Chairman Doug Singleton uh was able to make it, but on behalf and on of the city and the county, I'll just take that liberty, I would like to say good job, well done, and best wishes in your next endeavor. And if you will, come on up front and take a picture with the council, if you have any parting words, we'd like you to say that as well.
Commissioner Walker, would you come up too? I can promise you right now, my team's taking a deep breath going, oh God, I hope she doesn't do it. I'm not. Um, you said earlier that you're gonna miss me, and I said, no, you're not. And I mean that, y'all are not gonna miss me because you have Wade Lyles, you have Shay Redden, you have Letitia Taylor, and you have Mark Barrett. A very qualified and trained team that has been there with me every step of the way, and without them, I wouldn't be anybody. Thank you MPD for the first fourteen years of my career. I love that I've got to ride with you, train with you, be trained by you. Ron, John, First Day of the Academy. Chief Jordan, Chief Addy, thank you so much for all that you and your team have done. Chief Kastanzin helping do great exercises. Citizens of Montgomery, thank you for allowing me to be a part of everything we've done to worry about whole Montgomery. It didn't matter how much you make, it didn't care about your skin color. My job and our team's job is to protect, prevent, mitigate, respond to, and ensure that you recover from whatever the disaster of the day is. Thank you.
Mr. President, uh we've got some more good news. Um, city of Montgomery received a twenty-five thousand dollar grant last year from Healthy Babies Bright Futures, a nationwide nonpartisan project to reduce exposure to toxic chemicals that harm a baby's brain development. We are one of five communities across the country receiving funding. The others include Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Eugene, Oregon, Meadville, Pennsylvania, and San Francisco, California. Tonight, I'm pleased to announce the Montgomery Projects that will partner with the city to deliver food to vulnerable families in the community at least once per week. They are the Montgomery Area Food Bank, Fairview Farmers Market, Montgomery Curve Market, and Cope Pregnancy Center. Each of these organizations will receive five thousand dollars. Representatives from each of these organizations are here today. I want to ask them to join me and the council so the community can congratulate them on this award and thank them for their help in reducing health disparities for children in our community. If you would, please come up to the front of the dais and we will take a picture. Thank you. Again, we want to thank all these organizations for uh the work that they do, and we're certainly proud of the uh grant that we received. Um, Mr. President, you know, this weekend, there were several shootings in our area. Uh, two of these attacks ended in a homicide. Another left a bystander seriously wounded. Most of the shooting incidents in our community are happening between people who know one another. Chief Hall and I had a discussion about that this morning. They result from tempers flaring, conflicts that spill over into fighting, and other senseless stupid acts such as trying to send a message or show someone how tough they can be. That's likely even true for some of these incidents this weekend. However, tragically this time, uh one of the victims was literally just going about her way and doing what she would do on a normal day when she was caught in a crossfire waiting at a stoplight on Atlanta Highway. She was not the target, still, she was hit, life changed, family changed by an air bullet. Irrevocably changed the course of her future and that of her family and friends. As a result, she is paralyzed. This sort of behavior must stop. So far this year, there have been nineteen homicides. More than half of them have already been solved thanks to community involvement and thanks to those who have worked with our police department to identify the culprits. Montgomery Police have impounded five hundred and twenty-four weapons. Of those weapons, after processing through the National Integrated Ballistic Information Network, or NIBIN, fifty-seven came back with an unconfirmed potential association with a crime. Fifteen of those weapons included a switch, meaning the handgun had been modified into a semi-automatic weapon. Now compared to last year, which was a high that we would never like to see, when we had twenty-eight homicides, statistically, that's an improvement. But we know we don't want to see one homicide. We don't want to see one person injured at any point in time in this community. And so I want to commend our police department. I know they're working hard to investigate and ultimately bring to justice every crime in our city. They are among the nation's best in this regard, solving more than two-thirds of the cases that occur annually. I know that they need more help, we know that they need more help, support and people. And we're working hard daily to recruit and retain new officers to even increase compensation every way that we can. But the attack on our community is not the police force's responsibility to bear alone. Everyone in this room, in every corner of this community, has a responsibility as well, including myself. Not only is it about personal safety, but there's also an economic cost. According to the National Institute for Criminal Justice Reform, every shooting in our community costs approximately six hundred and four thousand dollars per injury. Now, we can't put a price tag on injuries, but when you look at the costs associated with it, from public safety to healthcare to the court system, six hundred and four thousand dollars per injury is significant. Every homicide costs more than one million dollars. The numbers rise if there's more than one shooting as we see far too often in our community. The adoption of effective intervention strategies will not only save lives, but also produce massive savings that can be applied to other city needs, such as more accessible and affordable childcare options, more and better community centers and libraries, before and after-school activities, not to mention more investments in affordable housing, workforce housing, infrastructure needs, police, fire, wraparound services, et cetera. And we were pleased to host a summit this weekend with Selma Mayor James Perkins in Montgomery to develop community-driven solutions to curb gun violence. More than three hundred people attended. Mr. President, I wish it was three thousand that would have attended. But we heard from young people, we heard from people who had been on the other side of the law who were trying to and who are working in our community each and every day. We heard from faith leaders, we heard from community leaders, we heard from elected officials, law enforcement, about things that we can do each of us to help make our communities safer for everyone, regardless of where they live. This summit kicked off a long process of self-evaluation and conversation to find a different approach to public safety. It's something that our policy director, our Office of Violence Prevention, has been working on nonstop. It's something that many of you on the council have proposed, how we invest our American Rescue Plan at dollars through hospital-based intervention programs and other community initiatives. This is based on the belief that the best way to keep our community safe is to work together, invest in our neighborhoods, and address the root causes of crime. And so with that, we are prioritizing five pillars in our approach. Prevention, invest more in programs and initiatives that prevent crime from happening in the first place, such as our Office of Violence Prevention, early childhood education, job training, and mental health services. Intervention, providing additional support and resources to individuals who are at risk of committing crime or who have already been involved in the criminal justice system. Relationship building, ensuring that all stakeholders in the criminal justice system are held in the criminal justice system are held accountable for their actions, in particular, repeat violent offenders. Accountability: ensuring that all stakeholders in the criminal justice system are held accountable, again, for their actions, but not at the same level of their nonviolent offenses. And restorative justice: focusing on repairing the harm caused by crime rather than simply punishing the offender. This can be done through programs like Victim Offender Mediation, Fines and Fees Executive Order, as well as Restorative Justice Circles. To all of our fellow citizens here, public safety is not just about law enforcement. It's about building a strong, resilient community where everyone feels safe and supported. Among the ideas, we would like to pursue more job youth training, apprenticeship programs, more gun buyback events, more resources for mental health services, and addiction programs, as well as new approaches to dealing with homelessness, and yes, advocating for common sense gun reform, such as the bills introduced by Montgomery State Representative Philip Ensler. But I know there's more that we can do, more that we need to do, and more that we will do. And we want to hear from all of our residents about their ideas for turning this around. On the screen right now is a QR code that links to a forum where the task force that organized this weekend's summit is collecting data and ideas. I encourage you to share this forum and provide your thoughts on ways that we can collectively help create a safer and more equitable city for all. Mr. President, I know this has been a long message, but I thank you for the time, thank you for the work for the council, and I look forward to working with you and other members to make sure that we provide a safer and better Montgomery for each and every citizen. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any comments, questions for the mayor? Thank you for that report, Mr. Mayor. What I'm going to do tonight, I know we have, you know, some sensitive items in the council chamber, it's full. So we're going to move our public communications to the front portion of our agenda, allow those people to talk, and then, you know, go into your agenda. We're paid to be here, so we want you guys to come speak to us on what you have to speak about. And so that's been the will of the council, so I'll move that portion of the agenda at this time. So first, well, let me make this announcement. This is a conversation with the council and the city employees. So this is going to be a conversation, not an argument. I know we kind of have some emotion in here. Every person has three minutes to speak to the council. Three minutes is your limit. Ms. Blaylock will keep the time, and it's your time limit. I ask you to close it out, and we'll move on to the next person. Thank you. All right, Mr. Jamel Brown to speak on violence in Montgomery.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me say this. The mayor made some great points. But Montgomery, Alabama is getting very worse when it comes to violence. It is worse than Memphis, Tennessee at this point. I'm going to just give one example, and then I'm going to take my seat. There's some boys went into a sickgo, Mr. Jim Wright, on Air Base Boulevard, and they had AR-15s. The owner of the sickgo told them, "You are not allowed to be in my store." They said, "Who are you talking to?" He said, "I'm going to call the police." He called the police. These boys waited in the parking lot. And when the police came and left, guess what they did, Mr. Jim Wright? They ran back past that store and shot that man...
Speak to the council, not Mr. ...
Shot that man's store up, and that man had to blow his store up. That's not right. We should not have to live every single day in fear of our lives that somebody is going to get hurt.
Hey, hold up.
We should not live...
Hold up, Mr. Brown, hold for a second.
Yes, sir.
I understand the emotion. I understand, you pause your time. Understand the emotion. Now, I understand you guys are talking, he's speaking. Let's keep the claps down so we can get through this, okay? So I understand that. Okay, there's one or two things that are going to happen. You're going to do what I asked you to do, or I'm going to ask you to leave. Thank you.
I can continue.
Yes, sir.
We're tired, Mr. President. You and I have talked about this for many years, and we know that we can never stop the killings, but we can prevent it by supporting Montgomery Police Department. We need to help MPD. And I'm going to be the first person to say, whatever we got to do to raise the salaries of our Montgomery Police Officers and put more officers on the street to prevent these crimes from happening, we need to look at everything across the board because I am afraid of West Montgomery's head till you can't even drive in the daylight. It was a big shooting on Fairview just yesterday while I have a congressional candidate. We had to pause to look around, Mr. Reed, to see where the shooting was going at. These boys have mental issues, I agree. They got a problem. But we got to find every resource we can to work together, the city council, the mayor, the community, and MPD, to find solutions, or it's going to be a hot summer May, June, or July. And I'm just warning you that when these kids get out of school, it's going to be pretty hot. And that's all I got to say, and that's all I came to talk about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Ms. Frida Owens?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Frida Owens. I have my family here with me. I apologize for being so emotional. First, thank you very much for allowing me to speak with you concerning the horrific, senseless shooting on Friday, April 12, 2024, at approximately 1:00 PM on the Atlanta Highway. My 43-year-old daughter, Amy Dix, is the victim of this crime. At 1:12 PM on that Friday, I answered my phone. "Mama, mama, I've been shot. I'm going to die, mama. I love you. I can't move. I love you. Take care of Ella." I thought, "This must be a prank call." I looked at my phone. It was Amy. As you see on the screen, that is my beautiful daughter with her wonderful husband, Joe, and her 17-year-old daughter, Ella Grace. As Amy was on the phone, I heard voices. I wasn't sure who they were. Amy could no longer respond to me. I heard someone say, "Can't get a BP," a blood pressure. Three times, no pressure. As a nurse, I know what no BP means. Maybe you have experienced a traumatic event as this, but if you haven't, it is gut-wrenching. It is terrifying. As I drove an hour and a half to get to her, I could only wonder if my precious Amy was alive or dead. Amy's a wonderful person. She's a devoted wife. She's a loving mother. She is precious to her entire family. She's a friend to many people. Now, she will add victim to her name and is a Montgomery County crime statistic. Amy recounted her experience to me.
Ms. Owens, come on, we allow you one more minute to wrap it up. I know you've got some other speakers that want to speak.
No, sir, I have to finish.
I'm going to allow you to finish, but I'm going to allow you one more minute. I understand where you're trying to go, but I've got several people that want to speak.
She heard many gunshots. She wondered what was happening. She slid down in her seat until she did not hear any other gunshots. She sat up and pow, she was hit. She's bullet went through her left shoulder, her rib, her lung, and landed in her spine. As she became weaker, an officer asked her name. Amy said to me, "I could hear him. I could not respond." The officer said, "Huh, she don't want to give us her name." I heard that. Amy's daughter, as you see on the screen, my granddaughter Ella, travels that Atlanta Highway five days a week to get to her school. She's not safe. Do you think she's safe? The news media reported this was a non-life-threatening event. I understand they get their information from an information officer. They're not professionals. They're basing that on the few minutes they're there. This was life-threatening. A punctured lung is life-threatening. It is absolutely life-altering. Crime has overridden Montgomery, Alabama. It is out of control. I pray each of you, as elected officials, will do your job to the best of your ability to find a solution to this problem. I pray each of you will be proactive with this challenge. The shooting was senseless, impacted not only Amy, but a husband, a daughter, an aunt, and many other family members. This shooting has impacted Amy and left her family financially for the rest of her life. The crime situation in Montgomery, Alabama is unacceptable. And I join... I join with the citizens who are represented here this evening and call for action now, immediately. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Owens, to the mayor. Thank you, Ms. Owens. Thank you, Ms. Owens. Hey, you may be seated. Thank you, Ms. Owens. And from the council's standpoint and on behalf of the city, we sympathize with what you're saying. Your speech was passionate, we sympathize. But as the council president, we allow you to talk, but we have to keep the rules for everybody. The rules are for everybody. So we appreciate you and we sympathize. There was nothing negative towards you. I'm just trying to keep this meeting going. Thank you. It's called "You're Going to Be Leaving." That's respect. All right, Ms. Aleah Dix.
Good afternoon. My name is Ashley Dix, and I am the sister-in-law to Amy. I'm not going to speak on the situation that happened because Frida very eloquently did that. I have kind of a different agenda. I am a nurse who has served in my community for 25 years. In the nursing world, we use an acronym called SBAR. It stands for Situation, Background, Assessment, and Recommendations. Today, I'm going to use this acronym to address this council. The situation is this. Number one, there is not enough police presence for the deterrence of crime. Number two, the public is not adequately informed of safety issues. The city does not get to decide my risk versus benefit of traveling in certain areas of Montgomery and not being transparent of potential issues or concerns in regard to patient, I mean, public safety. Officers need some type of sensitivity training for victims. It is easy to become jaded. I see it all the time in the hospital. But as a person is bleeding out, they should not be accosted by the police, nor should her husband have been denied transportation due to protocol. Every day, cops put unwilling passengers in their vehicles, so surely it's not against protocol to give a willing man a ride. Background: we have been told that there is an extreme shortage of patrol officers. What is your plan for recruitment and retention? There has to be a visible force. The police responded to the scene very quickly, but would it have ever happened if the police were visible? What is a better option to notify the public of dangerous areas until we get more police presence to prevent crime? How will that be budgeted? I feel certain that the city knows more of where the money can be allocated. Assessment: the assessment of this problem is apparent to the people who live and work in this area. Regardless of how much information is suppressed, the public will discuss the issues at hand, and transparency will be your greatest asset in preventing further mistrust. There has to be a change so the future generations can flourish without fear. My recommendations: create a plan, prioritize the solutions, offer us something. Look at other cities who are combating crime successfully. Learn to accept help. Mr. Reed and council members, it has been indicated to me that you are determined to control all of the aforementioned situations. If that is true, you must accept the responsibility for what's going on. If the solutions... If the situation is a derivative from insufficient funding, I'm recommending that you have two potential options. Divert the money from another project or require businesses' payers to collect, require businesses to pay or collect taxes from operations or sales. You cannot further tax citizens with a generalized tax hike who are already not getting what their taxes are going for, or intended to.
All right, Ms. Dix, I'm going to allow you 30 seconds to finish up. We've got to keep moving.
Thank you for your time, and I look forward to hearing of some potential solutions in the real near future. And Mr. Reed, I hear your budget. I see your budget. And I just, if we can get the legislation passed, great. If we can't, it doesn't matter. Money has to be allocated to this cause.
Thank you. Jennifer Reynolds?
Do I go?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. In Montgomery, these are facts. 2018, 29 homicides. 2019, 42 homicides. 2020, 68 homicides. The murder rate of one per 3,026 people. Baptist South saw seven gunshot wound victims for every death, which is well over 500 people. The same year in Chicago, there were 792 homicides with the murder rate of one per 3,402. 2021, 77 homicides with a murder rate of one per 2,640 people. 732 penetrating wounds treated at Baptist South Hospital. In Chicago, there were 779 homicides with a murder rate of one per 3,400. Year 2022, 62 homicides, which is a rate of 39.9 per 100,000 people. We have 200,000 people that live in Montgomery then. 2023, 75 homicides, which is a rate of 38.3 per 100,000 people. Chicago's homicide rate was 21.2 per 100,000. The state of Alabama's homicide rate was 15.9 per 100,000 people. The national rate of homicides was 5.5 per 100,000 people. Montgomery, Alabama, had a higher homicide rate than Chicago. The state of Alabama, the state of Mississippi, the state of Louisiana, and the... the state of Louisiana, and the United States. 592 patients were treated at Baptist South with penetrating wounds. Last weekend, two shooting victims on Friday, two fatal victims on Saturday. Year-to-date, Baptist South is averaging 42 gunshot or stabbing wounds per month that is equivalent to 1.9 injuries per day, 19 homicides. Rapid gunfire noted at Church's Chicken on Fairview. Gunfire at the carnival in February at East Hill Mall. Gunfire at Skyzone. Gunfire during dismissal of children from Forest Avenue Magnet School. Gunfire causing incidents of lockdowns at elementary schools. Gunfire at Lagoon Park during tennis. Gunfire during college baseball, softball, football games. Four to five times per week, I hear gunshots from inside of my house. I have bullets in my roof. I'm fearful at times leaving my house because of this. I have had my children roll up their windows, leaving my house because I'm afraid that they're gonna hit by a stray bullet. I've expressed concern to my husband over stray bullets that could hit a child riding their bike in our neighborhood or hitting someone we know personally. Well, that came true. Who will be next? Will it be me? Will it be you? Will it be my child? We have elected leaders for the city, and we need those leaders to keep us safe. What will y'all do for us? This will not be armed Montgomery.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Mr. Hicks. We might have servered Mr. Hicks. Mr. Hicks, did we talk about repairs on the rental property? Mr. Hicks? Mr. Hicks? Are you Mr. Hicks? You represent Mr. Hicks? Come to the mic, ma'am. Okay. No, no, no. I'm looking for Mr. Hicks to talk about repairs on the rental property because of gunshots. Is that you?
Yeah, that could be it. That's exactly what I put on the note.
Okay, well, they put the name down, Ms. Hicks. What's your name for the record, ma'am?
I'm Sandra Hicks Larson.
Okay. I apologize. I got Mr. Hicks on my...
Oh, that's okay.
Sandra Hicks?
Larson. I wouldn't be here tonight if it was not for Ash- I mean, Amy.
Talk to us, ma'am. Talk to us. I got you.
I grew up with Amy's mother-in-law, and I was in the same class with Amy's father-in-law. I came to read a letter that a tenant wrote to us on 4/15/2024. "The reason for this letter is because we are moving out. We honestly don't feel safe anymore. They have broken into the house three times already. They haven't even lived in the house for a year. I'm an older brother, and it's my responsibility to look out for my younger siblings. I want to make sure they are safe. As we all know, family comes first, and I hope y'all understand how we feel about it. We called the police, but they didn't do anything about the last night. Some black guys came and knocked on our door around 2:00 a.m. Both doors were closed and locked. Once I told them to leave, or I was going to call the police, they left. But we truly don't feel safe here anymore, and I hope you guys can find in your hearts to understand we found another place. We already are moving out the 20th of this month." This person's from Mexico, so it might be written. I thought he did a great job writing, but... "We are moving to Florida. We're actually going back, and thank you for giving us a home to stay. And sadly, this place isn't safe anymore. Like I said, my family's well-being comes first. I want them to feel safe, and I hope you guys understand. Thank you for everything." That was from Mr. Perez. "We have to repair roofs on our houses, and/or my husband has been in the rental business since, well, basically, not too long out of high school. It's expensive repairing roofs, but we will send people out. They repair the roof when there's a leak, and they'll bring my husband bullets, you know, bullet holes in the roof. And we... We just have problems with crime. If we redo a house, people will break in before somebody moves in and go in and tear things up. About two months ago, we replaced a stove and a refrigerator, and before we could get a tenant in, somebody had come in and stolen the stove and refrigerator. We had another house that was repaired last month, and somebody came in and pulled the stove and refrigerator through the house, scratching up the floors that had totally been redone."
Okay.
So, that's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. We started about that, but thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Shannon Insley? Shannon Insley?
Ladies and gentlemen of the Montgomery City Council and Mayor Reed, my name is Shannon Insley, and I stand before you today with a heavy heart. I'm deeply concerned about the escalating levels of violence plaguing our beloved city. Every act of violence inflicts lasting wounds on our community, tearing at the fabric of our society and leaving families shattered. Unfortunately, I know this firsthand. On Sunday, February 19, 2023, I had a gun pointed at me at 11:27 a.m. at Carter Hill and Vaughn Road. I went to Publix on Zelda, and while coming back home, I was stopped at the red light at the CVS. A man in a white SUV in front of me got out of his car and pointed a gun this big at me. The passenger of the car also got out. Thankfully, my two children were not with me. I was trapped. There was nothing I could do. I would not have been able to drive myself out of the situation, and my phone was in the backseat of my purse. I held my hands up on the steering wheel like this so they would see that I am not a threat. I didn't move to get my phone out of my purse, so again, they would not think that I was a threat. After the longest minute of my life, those men got back in the SUV, and I memorized the license plate. I called 911, and I gave it to the operator as soon as I could safely get away. I sent emails to the mayor, the chief of staff, and my councilperson. I left two voicemails with the MPD. I heard back from my councilman. Montgomery is the capital of dreams, and that day, it was a nightmare. I thought I would never see my family again, but they would wonder why I didn't come back from the store, that I would not get to say goodbye to my two sons or my husband. There was nothing I could do but pray that that man would not pull the trigger, and I thank God he did not, and I've lived with "What about next time?" And while there has not yet been a next time for me, there has been gun violence for many others whose endings were not mine, the three precious lives that were taken in the three hours just this past weekend. Amy Dix, a woman caught in the crossfires of violence on Friday, is paralyzed from the chest down, but y'all, she's praising God that she can still have the ability to hug her family. I love this city. I'm committed to this community. I'm here today because with great challenges, we have great opportunity. Great opportunity for action and change, and we must come together, united in our commitment to combat this epidemic of violence. It is imperative that we take decisive steps to address its root causes and implement measures to ensure the safety and well-being of all of our residents. So to achieve this, we need concrete deliverables. So in response to the rising crime across the entire United States, the Council of Criminal Justice launched a violent crime working group. I will add it to the QR. I appreciate that. That identified 10 essential actions that cities can take now, because a lot of the solutions y'all have given, they're great, but they're long-term. These are actually solutions that we can take now to reduce community gun violence. They are solution-focused. They are evidence-informed. They are community-engaged, and they are humanity-centered. I will send each and every one of you my statement with the detailed information on these concrete actions that you and we and this community can put in place, and I ask you to consider them. Y'all, I'm gonna be here next month. I'm gonna see where you are with these next steps that y'all have talked about. And action is not an option. The time for decisive action is now. Let us stand together, shoulder to shoulder, as stewards of peace and progress for Montgomery. Together, we can create a safer, brighter future for all. I thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Insley. Thank you for bringing a solution. Ms. Tori Johnston? Tori Johnston? Tori Johnston?
It's hard to go after such eloquent speakers, but I'm gonna try. My name is Tori Johnston, and I would like to thank you, Mayor Reed, and the city council members for allowing me to speak. I moved to Montgomery 12 years ago with my husband, who is a physician. His job brought us here, and we quickly made friends and got settled and welcomed in by the wonderful people this city is fortunate to have as citizens. Our boys have grown up in a tight-knit community and love nothing more than to play outside and ride bikes in the yard in the neighborhood, where we have always felt safe. Our family has been the victim of multiple home burglaries, car burglaries, and we've had our car windows busted out while we were asleep in our beds. Despite all of the previously mentioned events, I always feel safe inside my home. I was raised that in your home, it is a place where you should feel safe, and I believe that with my whole heart. I never, ever feel unsafe inside my home. God has always put that piece in me, and I live by that. However, where I do feel unsafe and extremely full of fear is when I leave my neighborhood and I get to that first intersection, and then to the next intersection, and so on. I worry that at any moment, I will have to make the split-second decision to either duck to the floor or floor the gas and risk causing an accident for fear that a stray bullet will leave me or my family members dead, paralyzed, or permanently maimed. I am just a regular person doing regular, everyday activities. There's nothing special about me that makes me more valuable than anyone else, but something I do have in common with all people of every race, age, gender, economic status, and political affiliation is that none of us want to be killed or horrifically injured while performing everyday tasks and going about our day peacefully. For example, yet another one of my safe gas stations is now off my list because of a recent shooting that occurred there. I, like so many others, will probably not venture on the Atlanta highway for months, maybe years. This will surely have a ripple effect on businesses, but when I think of all the streets that I have on the dangerous list, it's just about every major road in Montgomery. How many more lives are gonna have to be altered for something to stop? I have been on my knees praying to my Lord for him to give you, our city's leaders, the guidance and direction as to how to make our community safer. Words are great and promising, but we need action now. I'm begging you to please help us. I wish I had all the answers, but I don't, but I'm willing to help any way I can. Thank you for your willingness to publicly serve Montgomery. It is very appreciated, but we are losing hope, and we are running out of time. Our lives and your lives depend on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnston. Keith McCormick?
Councilman and Mr. Mayor, thank you for allowing me to come here tonight to speak with you guys. I'll go ahead and just get right into it. According to the Montgomery Chamber 2022 Accomplishments video, the mayor, you're bringing in a good bit of projects. The total, more than $400 million invested into the city with companies such as Hyundai, FedEx, and Premier. Unfortunately, with the crime levels here in Montgomery, the projects simply mean that people come to work in Montgomery, and they go home to a surrounding city and town to spend their money there, if not in Montgomery. Not because of cost of living, but because of lack of safety. When people enter Montgomery, there is fear. On my way in today, I drove for about 10 minutes through the bypass, saw zero cop cars. Prawful and Pike Road have grown 30 and 20% since 2019 and 2020. Montgomery, in 2020, we had 200,000 residents. In 2022, we dropped down to about 197,000. That's according to the census.gov. So in those two years, roughly 3,000 people have left Montgomery under your leadership. Now, if you were to take that, and if every person spends about $5,000 throughout the year of their daily activities of gas, entertainment, and food, that reduction in cash flow for the full city, $3,000, 3,000 people times $5,000, equates to about $15 million. And everybody knows you spend more than $5,000 a year with your family. You know, as a patron, the odds are lower that I will use or I will go to Montgomery to do business just as a fear of stopping at a red light, a coming away paralyzed, as my friend Amy Dix was doing. You know, Mr. Mayor, you were quoted in your 2019 transition plan. When you're playing a defense, you have to react to what the offense does. But I think as a city, our public safety department has to go on offense. Love it. I'm a football guy. So I loved your reference there. But in any sport, our endeavor, something I train in my own kids is to have that dog mentality. My mother worked for AEA for over 25 years, next to your father. Great man. I looked up to him when I was visiting her office. He had that dog mentality. He did. He got after it. He fought for what he believed in. In your most recent State of the City in January, in the coming weeks, you said in the coming weeks, you want to provide a criminal justice reform by forgiving traffic tickets and second-degree marijuana fines. I need one more minute. When I first met you in Ray McGrady, fun fact, with Doug Singleton, we had the YMCA youth football, and I said to myself, man, he's a nice guy. I like him. You are a very nice person, Mr. Mayor, but for this city, we don't need nice. We need a dog to handle these thugs on our streets. Mr. Mayor, I ask you, where is that dog mentality that your father had for this city? Where is it? You are the CEO of this city, and you have lost control of this city from a crime perspective. In any organization or program where the CEO has lost control, the area of their responsibility, the good CEOs step down because they're just not cut out for the job. So I'll leave with these three bullet points. We would like, by the next city council meeting, we want to know the results of the details of full investigation to the chief of police. By the next city council meeting, we want to, we want a plan to replace the current chief of police. And the third one, by the next city council meeting, we want a public statement from the mayor and the city council publicly stating their full support for both our police department and the use of appropriate force in maintaining law and order in Montgomery.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick.
I'll leave you with this. In this is a case of bullet casings from Stivers Ford, bullet casings that he has picked up over the last eight months. Here.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. That's your time. Thank you, sir. Ms. Sophia Anderson? Sophia Anderson?
Thank you.
Mr. William Boyd?
Good evening.
Good evening.
First, to speak from...
First, to speak from a pastor's standpoint. My, my heart goes out to this family. I understand the passion of a mother, and I understand her concern that she had for her child. I wish every mother or every parent should take a stand when something of that magnitude happened to their children. I woke up at 5:00 this morning, and I drove to Birmingham, Alabama. My daughter was coming from Alabama A&amp;M, and we met in Birmingham. I picked her up to bring her home just to vote. She had classes at 2:00. So I said that, that said, that all black people are not criminals, are not thugs. Okay? We want to make that statement clear. Now, I was a person, me, Jamel, and Carrie Jones, and this can go on and on. We used to come down here and dog out our police department, when at the time, black people was getting the lesser part of the stick. But tonight, I'm here to take a stand with, with our police officers who are understaffed, who are doing all that they can do to control this problem that we have in this city. So could we get our law enforcement just a hand clap? Could we do that? Yes, they, they... They, they deserve it. So in, in January, I had to bury my godchild, who got shot in the face. In November, I had to bury my nephew, who was shot in the face. So we've been having a problem for a long time. But we never came to the city council to address our concern. We take it to the lawmakers, who, who make these cruel and unnecessary gun laws. As of January the 1st, 2023, Alabama is considered an open-carry state, which means that any thug, any hootle, can ride around and carry a firearm. The mayor didn't do this. The council did not make this terrible law. I remember our sheriff, Derek Cunningham. He came before every law body system that he could and said, "This law is going to come back and it's gonna bite some people to their butt." He said that he begged them to not to pass this law. But we turned a deaf ear. He warned us that this city would be in the hands of Bloody Mary. He, he warned us to not talk to government and the Republicans. "Don't pass this. This is a terrible law." But it was okay because it was only affecting the black people. But now, it's a major concern. They jumping on our mayor and this council and this law enforcement. I asked them to, after this meeting, let's go to the Capitol. Let's protest, and let's address our concerns in unity. Because the Bible said, "Behold how good and how pleasant it is when brothers come together in unity." So I, so I, my heart, my heart goes out to this family. But I would like to put the burden of, of the problem where it's supposed to be, not the council, it's the lawmakers on the hill. It's where we need to go, and that's my comment. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Boyd. I'm gonna go back. I think Ms. Sophia Anderson is here. Please come forward.
How's everybody doing today? I'm here to make some complaints about the apartment complex that we live in. It's called McGee Park Apartment Complex. We've been having problems out of this apartment complex for like years. I've been living out there 15 years. You know, all of my 15 years, every apartment that I stayed in out there has flooded. Air conditioning didn't work. Heaters didn't work in the, in the, heaters didn't work in the winter. Air conditioning don't work in the summer. We called the rent offices. Don't nobody answer the phone. We never called the fire department. I say like, we have pictures. I thought they had some pictures to show y'all about our apartment complex. We have pictures. We have called them one month. We had a month running water. Species coming up through the bathtub, species coming up through the toilets. By the time I dipped all the water out of one bathroom, this is my bathroom, this is my tub. Once I dipped the water out of my bathtub, I had to run to my wife's bathtub and do the same thing. I did this one night till 5:00 in the morning. Five, 5:00 in the morning, I'm dipping water. We called, we don't have emergency call. We don't have a maintenance man out there. I need my city councilman to come out there and look at our apartment. We lost everything. We went on a vacation for three days in Texas, uh, excuse me, Tennessee. We come home, my water just hide my room. I lost everything. I lost everything. We don't have no help. I'm asking for some help from my district, from my people. I'm asking for some help from all of you people. We need help. They are not helping us out there. They are not helping us at all. And we need some help, and we have many problems out there. We got gun violence. We got guys now, the new people that took over the property now, they just, they're not, they're not, they're not scanning the people that they're moving in. Every guy out there walking around 16, 17, they got the guns out with the shirts off. We have no security. We have nothing. That's why we came to for your help. When I got home and saw my, uh, my bathtub and my house was flooded with water, I called the police department. I called WSFA. Couldn't nobody give me no help. But guess who gave us help? I called the fire department. The fire department came right on and helped me. So I thank the city fire department. I thank the police officer. The fire department came. They helped me wet back. They didn't, I didn't let them wet back by themselves. I was still wet vacuuming. Their fire department helped me. And I just want to ask y'all, please, when you get a chance, please, talk to somebody at the McGee Park. Let them know that somebody down here care about the people that live there. It's not just my apartment. It's like 16 apartments that's flooding. They flood every day, you know? I'm just asking for help, and I thank y'all for listening to me.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Anderson. I have some, you can come back. I have some information that I'm gonna share with you. I think I spoke with Ms. Sophia yesterday.
Yes, sir.
And I talked with the landlord about some of the situation that you was, you was sharing. Uh, they, they addressed that they was working on those things, but I got some other things, some numbers that I need you to call from some legal standpoint, from that standpoint, to try to get some help done out there. But I'll be getting in touch with you after this meeting.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Ron Simmons.
Morning. Good afternoon, council. Thank you all for this opportunity to just share with you a little update on the tourism department and some of the results that are happening here in Montgomery. First of all, I just want to thank you all so much for investing in tourism and the work that you do every day. This week was an incredible week. Of course, you all are aware of the Olympic trials. But a week prior to that, we had an incredible week at Maxwell Air Force Base, where we had Navy Week that entire week. And one of the things that we found was this is certainly a defense community. Well, we saw Montgomery really wrap their arms around not just the Air Force, but the entire defense community and the Navy, and they wrapped their arms around us. During the, the airshow, I spoke with Colonel Richardson, and he said the first day, they had about 75,000 people on the pad. And that's an incredible time for the first time since 2017. They had another 70,000 watching online the first day. And we're forecasting about 150,000 plus really here in Montgomery and throughout the city watching that. So we're seeing a sense of pride as a result. Some of the things that you may have seen, and I'd just like to just go over this with you. There is an organization that we recruited some time ago called Kalia. And I'm sure our, our police department is familiar with Kalia. But Kalia is the accreditation agency for law enforcement all over the country. We had about 500 Kalia representatives from all over the country here in Montgomery. They brought about over 2,000, how many? We had about, we had about 1,000 total room nights, hotel room nights from Kalia. And during that time, we saw a 22% increase in visitors. We saw 117% lift in attractions. The outdoor attractions saw almost 200% lift. That was 196%. Accommodations, 15% increase, and food was 6% increase. So I'm here to tell you, the work we're doing and the work you're doing and you're investing in in tourism is making a difference. And we're having a very busy march, and we're having an incredible May that's coming up. We have the National Negro Golfers Association that's coming. We just came off of 2,000 visitors into Montgomery, riding and running from Selma to Montgomery for that march and that run. So I just want to share with you all the results that you're, you're receiving because of the investment and the work that you're doing. And you have an incredible hospitality community that is growing, is thriving, and I thank you so much. Any questions?
Any question, Mr. Simmons? Thank you, Mr. Simmons.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On the last one, our public communication roster, we have Dr. Dawn. Dr. Dawn, Baptist South.
Thank you, thank you, city council. Thank you, everybody, for being here. I'm Ning Dawn from Baptist South. Y'all, I have pleasure to treat a lot of patients with these senseless crimes. And you know, what happened to Amy is not an isolated event. You know, we have many, many patients. It happened more and more common. You know, I have patients who just driving to work on a highway and get shot, you know, in the head, in the spine, and some survive. Just some doesn't make it. But the ones that do survive, often they have significant deficits, okay? Significant injury, okay? So what happened to Amy is not an isolated event. It can happen to me or to any of us, okay? And it become more and more common, become more problem. And you know, Montgomery in general is a big city. And we are medically is an underserved area. And one of the reasons we've been underserved area is we have a hard time recruiting physicians. A lot of guys do with the crime. Not only we can't recruit physicians, allow physicians, we couldn't retain them, they're lab because of the high crime rate. So at this rate right now, you know, the direction we're going, if we not fix this problem of senseless crimes like this, you know, I think we, soon we don't have enough physicians to care for all these patients. And I understand the solution gonna be difficult, gonna be tough. But I think we need to put in resource and energy. I think we must do it, otherwise, you know, we don't have a city to live in, okay? And you know, what we don't want to do will be normalize this, okay? We don't want to say, oh, you know, this is a new normal. That's not new normal. I came from Chicago, a lot of shooting there, and we don't want to be in Chicago, not a cattle murder. A lot of time, when it's shooting over there, commonly we would say, well, that's Chicago. Well, that's, you know, that's not normal. You know, I think we need to address this issue, and hopefully, you know, the city council and everybody here are willing to put resource and solve this problem. All right, you know, I mean, especially, you know, I have kids, you know, three kids, two young ones, you know? And for example, you know, they want to go hang out with their friend. Again, worried, where are they going? Which part of the city is safe? I don't know which part of the city is safe, because I know this can get shot. I mean, I've seen kids get shot by stray bullet, and it's having nothing to do with what they're doing. That's all I have today.
Thank you, Dr. Dawn. Thank you for what you do for us in City of Montgomery. All right. Ms. Mitchell? Go ahead, Ms. Mitchell.
Ms. President, motion for recess.
All right, we're gonna take a recess for about 10 minutes, Ms. Beard, and then we'll come back and allow you to talk before we go into our regular thing. A lot of my members up here saying they need to take a little break. So thank you, guys. We'll be back at Ms. Blaylock. We'll take a 10-minute recess. We'll be back at 5:37. So thank you, guys. We'll be back at Ms. Blaylock. We'll take a 10-minute recess. We'll be back at 5:37. Thank you, Dr. Dawn. Thank you for what you do for us in City of Montgomery. All right. Ms. Mitchell? Go ahead, Ms. Mitchell.
Motion for recess.
All right, we're gonna take a recess for about 10 minutes, Ms. Beard, and then we'll come back and allow you to talk before we go into our regular thing. A lot of my members up here saying they need to take a little break. So thank you, guys. We'll be back at Ms. Blaylock. We'll take a 10-minute recess. We'll be back at 5:37.
But these were young people. Jennifer, I taught Jennifer. She cheered for me. She's an anesthesiologist. We have a young doctor who have, who are making Montgomery their home. Mary can't control this crime. We can't control it. The police are working day and night. They're overworked. And they're doing, we're doing the best we can right now. 1% of this city is causing the havoc that we are absorbing. It's anything from riding four-wheelers in your neighborhood, motorcycles without helmets, homelessness, sleeping on your front porch at your business and not getting satisfaction. Maybe it's taking too long for police to come to something because they're somewhere else. They're stretched from pillar to post. Every neighborhood has had killings and shootings and homicides. District 2 has had two of two young teenagers. It hits home. So I encourage anyone in this audience to get involved in your community. Get all those people that were here, the hundred, we've had 100, 200 people here. You connect with a community association. There's not one in your neighborhood? You connect with Ms. McAllister down at Neighborhood Services. Get involved, support what we can support, and let's be power in numbers and make sure Montgomery is where we want to stay and make it a safe community for our future and our future generations.
Thank you, Ms. Beard. Very well spoken. All right, item number one, Ms. Blaylock, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, point of order, special committee reports.
Oh, I skipped that. All right, any special committee report?
Mr. Calhoun.
Mr. Pruitt.
We want to bring out of the Public Safety Committee meeting the raises for MPD. There are a couple of issues that we want to look at, maybe possibly some sanitation fees, possibly a public safety tax. But I'd like to put it on the agenda and have a council as a committee take a look at all these, since it is gonna be such a interesting issue to try to figure out.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pruitt.
Is that the will of the council to call it from the committee?
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Thank you, council.
And I'll give it to you, Ms. Blaylock, and we'll share out the word.
Mr. President, one more committee.
Ms. Johnson?
Yeah.
Pass it out, you.
Okay.
You ready for item one?
No, not yet.
I'm ready for item one.
Now I want to move out of committee, make a motion to move, to pull the moratorium on automated car washes out of committee.
All right, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Eight. Are you standing? Are you voting? Are you voting yes?
I'm voting yes, yes.
Unanimous.
All right.
I want to make a motion to adopt.
Ms. Blaylock, will you read it for me, please?
Do you have the, does the council have it in front of them?
We just passed it out.
They do.
All right, it is a resolution. Resolution. Authorizing a six-month moratorium on the construction of automated car washes.
Mr. Graves?
The exhibits attached to it, the map or the business licenses, is anything attached to it to support it?
No, ma'am.
No.
That was provided outside of the council. This was...
Ms. Blaylock.
Yes, sir.
Procedure rule, if we move this to the end and take it back up, I have the map.
Okay, I will need it for my records.
Okay.
So...
Yep.
You'll have to make a motion to attach it to the resolution because it was presented without that information.
Okay, so I'll make that amendment. I'll get the map in a short.
Okay, so you're gonna carry this over?
Yeah, we carried over to the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Item one, resolution requiring majority vote of the council and order for Alabama Legislature to consider proposed changes to Act 618 or any standing laws, resolution, ordinance, or procedures germane to the City of Montgomery.
Mr. Pruitt?
Move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Can we ask questions about this real quick?
Hold your hands up till I can read them.
Questions are right on the floor.
Ms. Johnson, you had your hand up a minute ago. Did you change your mind?
I did.
Okay, so it's gonna be one, two.
And somebody had a question.
And nine.
All right, all opposed, same right.
Andrew had a question.
Hey, the question was on the floor. All right, all opposed have the same right.
That's four. I don't have Mr. Simmons.
I'm staying.
You abstain, I want to stay. It fails for lack of majority.
All right, so what's the question, Mr.?
It's all good.
All right, next item.
Item two, review of Infusion Lounge, 3905 Troy Highway.
All right. This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak in favor of this item, please come forward.
No, sir, it's not a public hearing.
It's open business?
Yes, sir, just a review.
This is a review. Your name for the record, sir?
Terrance Johnson with Infusion Lounge. Good evening, everyone.
All right, Ms. Mitchell?
Mr. Johnson, you have witnessed what the City of Montgomery has bear within the last weekend, the last couple of weeks with gun violence. It was brought to my attention that you are having some issues, and I want to kind of you to address those issues with the City Council. I think one of the issues that you have for is your parking lot. What have anything that you have put in place to kind of, I know you, the parking lot is so big and it's hard for you to control Bangkok and all the way down, but just in your perimeter, what have you done to make sure that your patrons are safe in that area?
Yes, sir. We have always had security. We have security on the outside, inside, and at the front door. And we have security in the back area, also provide a security for the parking lot back there. The issue at hand is a lot of citizens are driving through the area, spinning in their cars all up at the top of the parking lot and shooting out the one of back and forth in the parking lot. But those are not our patrons. However, we have provided security that's there in the parking lot to help try to keep our patrons safe.
My next question is, what is your times of operation and what is your age for committing into your club, I mean, to your lounge?
21 and above, in 5:00 PM to 1:00 PM Monday through Thursday, 11:00 AM to 3:00 on Fridays, 11:00 AM to 2:00 AM on Saturdays, and 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM on Sundays.
My next question to you, anytime a patron has a disturbance in your, inside of your establishment, do you ban those individuals from coming to your establishment after that incident? Or are they able to still frequent your establishment even causing a disruption inside your establishment?
No, sir. We currently have a ban list that we keep at the front door and electronically. And anyone that have disruptive behaviors banned and not allowed to come back.
And my last and final question, if the opportunity was to, some way, work itself out that we are able to do off-duty police officers, would you, no matter the cost, would you be willing to pay that cost and get any type of liability insurance that the city might require if you was able to do those off-duty police officers?
Most definitely.
Okay. Ms. Blaylock, he have satisfied me. I would like to see him back in about 30 days.
30 days. Is there anything that he needs to specifically?
My biggest thing is I want the number of security guards that you have, and then I want also the name of the company and whatever certification.
He's here right now.
Okay.
State Focus Security is here.
How you doing, sir? It's one question that I had, and I don't know. I did see a video that your security, your armed security guys had long guns. And what type of guns are you guys carrying out in your parking lot?
See, what we have, excuse my name, Walter Le, I'm his head of security. And what we have, what we're doing right now is all the guards that's outside have handguns.
Okay.
The only guards that might have a rifle or semi-automatic rifle, what you're stating, is the ones that's at the barricades where we have blocked off. And the reason we have those barricades blocked off is because as we let people into the perimeter of Infusion, we look through their cars to make sure they don't have any big firearms. Now, it's nothing we can do about a pistol because you can hide it anywhere. But a big AK or something, you can't hide that. So if they do have it on the inside of their cars, we make them leave the premises or go take it somewhere else or do something else with it. And since we've been doing that, we have slowed down some of the traffic and some of the stuff that they're bringing on property.
And my last question, I'm gonna let you go. What type of relationship you have with other club owners or other lounges? So if Mr., just say if Mr. Jackson is having an issue and he have put somebody out of his establishment that was causing trouble, do you have a relationship that they call you guys and say, hey, listen, the guys in the green cars about to come up to your establishment? Or they leaving your establishment, going to, do you have that relationship with those other club owners? Are those other, you guys do?
We do. We do.
Do y'all share your ban list with them as well?
We do.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Still coming back in 30 days?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask one question, Ms. President? What's now your security company?
It's State Focus slash Secure.
What is it?
State Focus slash Secure.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item three, resolution approving substantial amendments to the Community Development Block Grant to reprogram allocations to be used for rehabilitation of homeless facilities, temporary housing units, and gas finance, gap financing for family affordable rental homes.
Okay. Thank you, sir. This item was carried over, and I think the question has been asked, any questions for the city?
Make a motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Item four, resolution obligating our funding to the Montgomery County Commission for the expansion of emergency services transport and to enter into interlocal agreement governing expenditures.
All right, this item was carried over. We had some things we had to discuss, but we figured out what we was doing as far as the county ambulatory service, so I need a motion.
Make a motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Eight. Mrs. Johnson?
Abstaining. Abstaining, yes, ma'am.
You abstaining?
Yes, ma'am.
Right to one, it carries. Item five, application for a towing company by Ernest Edwards, doing business as Edwards Hauling and Towing.
Mr. Ernest Edwards. Ernest Edwards. All right.
Mr. President, I ask to carry this over.
All right, item be carried over.
Item six, application for a towing company doing business as DSHC Towing.
Okay. Mr. Dietrich Moss. Dietrich Moss.
Mr. President?
Ms. Beard.
Let's carry this over again.
All right.
Item seven, application for restaurant retail liquor license, doing business as Clay Seafood and Southern Fried Chicken, 111 West Fairview Avenue.
All right. Representative for Clay Seafood, Clay's Southern Fried Chicken, I'm sorry. I just love that fish, man. I have my mouth seafood.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening, sir.
Name is name.
My name is Clarence Clay.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Riley?
Um, we, me and Mr. Clay has already spoken. You've gotten everything straight. They did notify me that you have came over and talked to them and got everything situated. I'm good with it. Um, he's already...
Need a motion?
I need a motion to adopt.
All right. It's your motion. We have a motion to adopt by Ms. Riley. She needs to be speaking into the mic.
I got it. I got it.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Good luck with your business, sir.
Thank you.
Item eight, ordinance delegating to the Montgomery Planning Commission the responsibility to provide a public hearing for site development plans.
All right. Mr. Mitchell? Need a motion to suspend the rules first?
Motion to suspend the rules.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
All right.
Motion to adopt?
No.
I'm in.
No, he going to substitute out there.
There's a motion to adopt, then a motion to substitute.
All right, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Okay, the substitute is the motion you're voting on right now.
Substitute first.
Raise your hand, Council. Unanimous.
All right. Most of them voting on the main motion?
Motion to adopt is substituted.
All right. Mr. Mitchell?
Motion to adopt, substitute.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Good job, Mr. Mitchell.
Ordinance is adopted, is substituted. Item nine, resolution consenting to the development of solar facilities within a drainage easement for Old Hainville Solar LLC.
Item number nine, representative of item number nine, please come forward.
Hello, my name is Zoe Gobetz. I'm with Pine Gate Renewables, representing Old Hainville Solar.
Okay, Council, you heard her presentation in the work session, need a motion to suspend the rules? All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, all in favor. Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Good luck with your project, ma'am. Thank you.
Item ten, resolution authorizing development agreement and related documents for the use and grant of public funds and things of value in aid of Old Hollywood Village Holdings LLC.
All right. On item number 10, Mr. David Silverstein.
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 Mr. Mayor, good to see you, Mr. President.
All right, any question?
I'm David Silverstein, and I am president of Five Stone Group. We are a real estate development company in Birmingham. My partner, Michael Riley is here, who's actually from Montgomery. Uh, we are working on a redevelopment plan for a retail site that's on East Fairview that's currently falling in. It was owned by Mr. Watson, and so we're looking to redevelop it and eliminate the block and bring back some new retail to the area.
Okay. Any question from Mr. Silverstein?
Uh, I do, uh, is this in agreement with, this agreement is that the community development is working on this with you all, Desmond, or who's working on this project with you all from the city's standpoint?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand your question.
Who worked with you on this, Andrew?
I'm working with Mayor's Office, Jeremy Reed, Chip Hill, Stacy was involved, Betty was involved.
So this financial assistance, um, the reason I ask, uh, sub-paragraph F, Mr. Zemansky, can you explain that to me just so I can have an understanding?
Mr. Reed?
For which one?
Sub-paragraph F.
On the second page?
Mm-hmm. Financial assistance.
Yeah, there's a development agreement included in here, includes reimbursement for infrastructure improvements in the area. Obviously, the project has a zero lot line with the sidewalk over there, and so as part of that, and this started a little bit even before, uh, I think probably back in September, August, September, and so just working on ways because they're going to have to do some improvements to the actual streetscaping as well.
Okay, streetscaping.
All right. Any more questions, Mr. Reed? Mr. Smith, need a motion?
All right, motion to suspend the rules?
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Thank you, sir. Good luck with your business. Look forward to working with you.
Item 11, nominations for National Register of Historic Places for council information, comments, and public comments, First Baptist Church, Moore Building, Centennial Hill, and Civil Rights Movement in Montgomery.
Okay.
Again, this is just an opportunity to prevent, to present these nominations to you and to allow for any public comment regarding the National Register nominations, and to let you know if you have any individual comments or if you would like to support these nominations, you can forward that to me by email, and I will forward that on to the Alabama Historical Commission.
All right. Any questions?
Uh, no questions, Mr. President. He did let me know that Jackson Street, uh, it is on the map and it is one of the locations, the Baptist Church. Um, I would like to ask the Council to send some letters of support in his nomination because it is very well and very much overdue for the Centennial Hill area.
Thank you.
All right. Need a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend.
You don't have to vote on it.
Oh, we don't?
No, sir. You just have to send comments to him if you have any.
Okay.
Go for it.
Item 12, show cause hearing on the proposed revocation of the business license of Vibes LLC at 5761 Atlanta Highway.
All right. Owners of the BYBL LLC, Mr. Codere.
Vibes.
Vibes. Mr. Codere Milliner. All right, sir, what you got?
Uh, license and revenue division, we have not received any word from them regarding payment.
All right. And Ms. Mitchell?
Mr. President?
Ms. Mitchell?
So do we know if they still operating as of today? Have anybody been out there to?
So, so...
Their hours are pretty much after our hours, so.
Well, someone come to the mic, please. We can't hear. Sir, do you know if they're operating, are they still in business?
We do not know if they're operating or not.
They had a trash.
They are, they're doing it after hours.
Bob, how, can we ask, how far are we behind? I mean, what can...
No, sir, you can't, you can't discuss amounts in...
We can't discuss amounts or anything. We're just saying they're behind.
I would say if they ain't going to show up, let's just pull their license.
I don't think they're operating anyway.
Well, let's just pull their license.
That's the next one.
All right, let's just go ahead.
All right. Okay.
Ready for 13?
Yes, ma'am.
Resolution revoking the business license of Vibes LLC at 5761 Atlanta Highway.
Okay. Need a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend the rules.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Item 14, show cause hearing on the proposed revocation of the business license of Stakeout at 2930 Carter Hill Road.
All right, owners of Stakeout, please come forward. All right, your name for the record?
Christina Harris.
Okay. All right, Ms. Harris, uh...
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out what's the status on your business license. Have you renewed it? I know we talked back in November, we set up a payment plan, and my understanding has definitely been paid. Was it November or October?
Well, it was...
Nothing has been paid on the back taxes.
I have, I have, and I'm current today, and I have paid seven...
Speaking to your microphone.
I said I'm current today, and I have paid 7,500 towards that. Only thing I'm asking is for a reasonable payment arrangement.
You asking for a...
Reasonable, just a reasonable payment.
Payment agreement.
Right, a reasonable one.
Okay, so are you making your payments on time?
Yes, sir. I, well, I make, I'm current as of today. Um, today, Ms. Michelle Harris from the city sent me, um, what I paid since December, which was $7,500, it was at 28,000, now it's at 20,000. So the only thing I'm asking for is a reasonable arrangement. I was told to pay 50% of that, and, but I just didn't have it to pay the 50%, and then the next week, the remaining balance, I can't do that.
Okay, so can you set up a payment plan with them, whether it's 25%? Because, you know, the thing we're trying to say, in order to do business in Montgomery, and I talked with you on it, you got to pay your taxes. We want you to do business. We don't want to shut you down because we understand that you can't pay it, but if you're not willing to make the payment agreement and stick to your payment agreement, we have no other choice.
Yeah, and I, and I, I will stick to it, but I, I just want to get a reasonable something that we can afford, you know, you know, withstand current because we are current today.
Okay. Yes, sir.
As we said in the meeting last month when we initially spoke of this, a couple of years ago, this business was behind on taxes. We set them up on a payment agreement. They defaulted on that payment agreement less than three months later.
Okay. So let me, let me do what I need you guys, I'm going to move this, I'm going to go on from the next two items. You can set your payment agreement with them, and they will make a statement. If you can't keep your payment agreement, you'll be back before the Council. We don't have no other choice but to revoke the license. I want to keep you in business so you can do business, and then you can pay our taxes, but we can't allow you to do business in Montgomery, and that's the message to all businesses, and don't pay your taxes. Because we have to collect those.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right.
Oh, what were you doing with her?
No, I'm going to go ahead, and, uh, we're on item 14.
Yes, sir.
Let's go 15.
Item 15, resolution revoking the business license of Stakeout, 2930 Carter Hill Road.
Okay. So what, what, I need to put this in the record. I'm going to revisit this in 45 days to make sure the payment agreement is set, and then she's abiding by her payment agreement.
Okay, so you're carrying it over for 45 days?
Yes, I'm carrying it over for 45 days.
Yes, sir.
To understand that if you revoked on that, I'm sympathetic, no. All right, thank you, Ms. Harris.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 16, show cause hearing on the proposed revocation of the business license of Indie Ultra Lounge, also known as Reset Montgomery, 3439 McGee Road.
The owners of Reset Lounge, please come forward. Your name for the record, sir?
Javard Bruce.
All right. Mr. Bruce, you were up before the Council on a resolution revoking your business license. I think you was here the last time, but we didn't allow you to talk with us. It wasn't before the Council at that time, it just was a show call. Uh, tell us what your status is on paying your license and your...
Uh, I was, I had a payment plan set up, and I was late making the payment. I understand what I signed, and it just, you know, I was just late on it, but, uh, I'm prepared to pay what needs to be paid. I know half of it today, and I did explain to, uh, I did explain to them that it would not take me the entire year to pay it off because the business is slow, you got slow months and you got faster months. So it was going to come in before the year, which it'll be in maybe because December, January, and February are my slowest months. So you really don't make a lot in those months, and, uh, now we're starting to pick back up. When March comes along, March, April and May, you know, those are our better ones.
Okay, so you prepared to pay something today?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we can make that arrangement with, uh...
Okay, uh, what I was going to say is we did, uh, put Mr. Bruce on a payment agreement in the last year. One of the stipulations of our payment agreement states, in addition to making a monthly payment on the back taxes, they have to pay monthly on the ongoing taxes each month. Mr. Bruce did not do that, so now we're further behind.
All right. So, all right, so what I'm understanding now, Mr. Bruce is here, you can make a payment.
Yes.
And you can get the payment agreement. It's the same thing I just said before. We want you to pay your taxes in Montgomery. I know if I put you out of business, you're not going to pay the taxes. We just going to be hung with that bill. So I'm going to do the same thing on this item if we move to the next one, Ms. Blaylock. I'm going to do 45 days, set the payment agreement with them, make the payment that you need to make, and then we'll review it in 45 days after we move forward.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Item 18, show cause hearing on the proposed revocation of the business license of SS Auto Cars, 1245 Old Lamar Road.
All right. Alright. Representative for SS Auto Cars, please come forward. Amir Haasline? Alright. Okay, we can go to item number nineteen?
Resolution revoking the business license of SS Auto Cars, twelve forty-five Old Lamar Road.
Need a motion to suspend the rules?
Move to suspend the rules.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. Item twenty, resolution appointing Gina Spivey to the Montgomery County City Commission.
Motion to suspend the rules?
On the rest of the agenda?
On the rest of the agenda, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Ms. Beard?
Motion to adopt?
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. Twenty-one, resolution reappointing Adam Mullendorf to the Board of Trustees, Montgomery City County Library.
Need a most?
Move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. Twenty-two, resolution reappointing Camille Fodneck DeVard Layden to the Montgomery Historic Preservation Commission.
Need a motion?
Move to deny. I was just kidding.
All in favor, please keep your hand down.
Move to adopt. Move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted.
Let's see if you're paying attention.
Always.
Twenty-three, resolution designating nuisance abatement agent?
Move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. Twenty-four, pursuant to section eleven fifty-three B one Code of Alabama, authorization of demolition at the listed location.
Move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. Alright, it's upheld. Item twenty-five, resolution declaring, authorizing, and assessing cost of abatement of public nuisances on various lots.
Alright, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. Mr. President, I have one contingency fund. Mr. Mc, Mr. Reed, these are gonna need my oral approval. It is for District One, two thousand dollars to Bellhurst HOA. They are vendors.
Approved. Ms. Bl, Ms. Blaylock, I got another one. I want to give, um, a thousand dollars for the, uh, with Humane, for the young man doing the Eagle Scout project.
Eagle Scout. Yes, sir. Okay. Is that all?
Mr. President?
Mr. Smith?
Ms. Blaylock, I'm gonna do five thousand to the Humane Society.
For the Eagle Scout?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Blaylock, for the Team Achievers, I want to do fifteen, YMCA Team Achievers, fifteen hundred.
Okay.
And, uh, and one thousand for the Eagle Scouts.
Okay. Anybody else?
Ms. Blaylock, District Two contingency, a thousand to the, um, Humane Shelter for Bobby Bradford, please.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Reed, you okay with these? These are all vendors?
Yes, all approved.
Okay, ready for the motion to adopt?
Need a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adjourn?
Mr. President?
Mr. Mitchell, Ms. Johnson?
I yield to...
Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Uh, Ms. Blaylock, I would like to call Auto Detail King, uh, that's twenty-two zero five Mount Megs Road for a show call.
I'm not, start over again and talk slowly.
Sorry. I was ready to go. Um, I need to call Auto Detail King for a show cause hearing.
The, uh... What's the name again?
Auto Detail King.
Auto Detail Team?
King.
King. Oh, okay.
The address is twenty-two zero five Mount Megs Road.
And you want them just for a review or?
Show call.
Okay, are you gonna get me some causes for me to send in the letter?
Yes, their business license has already been revoked, um, and they're still operating.
Okay, you can't call them for a rev, a show cause or revocation because if they don't have a business license.
They already been out there?
Hey, Mr. Reed? I think it's something we, we gonna have to just sit down, because this, this is happening too often. The business license is revoked, and people just disregarding what we're trying to do at a city. And that's something that we need to collect, so we need to figure out whether it's due A, A. Matter of fact, we had a, a young lady here today that sent a proposal on, they will collect from the city at a seventy-thirty turnaround time. So let's sit down over the next couple of weeks and come up with a plan on how we address these issues, people operate without businesses in the city.
Copy that. Also had that conversation with, uh, Councilman Samensky, uh, last week, so we'll, we'll look into that.
Okay.
Next, Mr. President, um, I would like to hold the, um, Commerce Committee meeting on the business license and the, uh, amending the ordinance for business licensing with the, um, no physical location as well as, uh, licensing fees for, uh, May third, tentative of May third at three P M.
I'm gonna have to put that into your committee.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I wanna call the committee meeting.
So you got that. We'll go ahead and...
May third, when? At what time?
Counsel Johnson, consider a, can you push it a week?
Uh, one week?
Oh, because yeah, I'll be out of town on the third.
One P.
So it's tenth? May tenth?
It won't be him.
It might be May tenth.
May fifteenth. Send, send me the notes then.
May fifteenth, three P M.
May fifteenth at three P M.
Three P M?
In the Council Chamber.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and this is a Commerce Committee, business license and amending the ordinance for no physical location?
Yes.
That specifically is it, because, um, there needs to be more, you have to give the charge specific because I have to hold that committee to what the subject is.
Review it. How we review it? Business license fee structure?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
The business license fee structure and the, uh...
Amending the ordinance for...
Amending on the no physical location. Alright. Mr. Mitchell?
Um, Mr. President?
Mr. Mitchell?
Want to put in committee, uh, talked about that, that Family Dollar, and we can get, um, District Six getting a, a community center.
Okay. Ms. Blaylock, we'll assign that to, uh, Park and Rec, I think we have the Park and Recreation Committee?
Yes, sir, I think you did that at the beginning.
Okay. So you, you hold that did at the beginning? Alright.
One, one other thing, Mr. President. Uh, I've been working with Montgomery Public School System, uh, security. They're putting on an event because, um, they're, they're dealing with a lot of stuff that they don't have guns, they don't have pepper spray, they only have their hands, so they're doing, putting on a training, um, and they're asking that the county help fund this, this training. They were asking for a thousand dollars per council. I think the training will cost them maybe ten thousand dollars. So I told them I would come to the council and ask, um, on the behalf of MPS Security, because everybody has a school in their district, and those security guards need to have the type of training that, that will keep them safe and also the, the students that we represent in our district.
Mr. Mitchell, when is the training?
Uh...
I'm trying to see the date.
Is that in here?
I thought it'd probably be done over summer, right? Okay, just get the dates to...
Mr. President, one more thing, I'm sorry. Um, I'd like for us to look at, uh, and Jeremy, this is something that, uh, I think can be a, uh, task for us. Uh, when we did the abatements, it was about four hundred and nine properties, Mr. President and Counsel. Twenty-five percent of those properties were state properties. There has to be a way that we hold the state accountable for the blight that they cause in the city of Montgomery. They don't pay taxes to us. They don't have to let us know about any development, but they have to be held accountable some form or fashion. So maybe we put that in committee to discuss. That's why I want to create this housing committee, to discuss how we handle that, because not only does the state, but MPS as well, with the dilapidated school buildings. So it's, something has to happen with that, and we have to come to some kind of agreement with MPS, me with their leadership and the board, which is well overdue anyway. And, uh, just figuring out what we'll do about this with these state properties, because we don't get the money until they sell these properties. And so we're hit with paying off in these demos or whatever we have to do with the inspection process. So there, something has to be done with it.
Okay, I think, uh, Ms. Johnson, I think we spoke about, I know with the local delegation about the thing with the state properties. As to my understanding, Stacy, you can help, but they are exempt, right? They exempt, so it's, it's one of those things where our hands are tired unless we get legislation, and, you know, it's kinda hard to get legislation passed to the state to offer them to pay the cities for maintaining. It was kinda like occupational tax and things that we said. If you heard what they said earlier tonight, everybody comes into the city of Montgomery, uses our services, and then they leave. So, you know, we have to figure out a way that we can increase our revenues on the things that we do. And I agree with you, you know, we have plenty of properties throughout this city that belongs to the state, that our crews go out, either tear them down or cut the grass to keep them up during the summer months, that we get no reimbursement on it. So I think, uh, we'll, we'll set up something to talk with our local legislature and the school board, and then if we can get some results, that we can come up with an ordinance or something, or something that we can pass, uh, after we speak with them and see what their willingness is, uh, to, to work with us on some of these properties.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Have a motion for adjourn, to adjourn? All in favor, please stand.